Welcome to Neighborhood.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Hold, hold.
It's a lecture McDonald lecture. Microphone at UH. Good evening and welcome to Neighborhood Board fourteen. Couple administrative announcements. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. And for those of you who are not present, if you want to be recognized, that's those of you in WebEx, please raise your hand so that our neighborhood assistant can see you and tell me that you wanted to speak. Okay, well, thanks everybody for coming. First on agenda, Honolulu Fire Department, are you here? No, how about the Honolulu Police Department? I see. There he is. HPD?
Yes, good evening, sir.
Good evening, all yours.
Okay, sir, this is Lieutenant Creighton Artico with the Kalihi Police Station. I'm one of the nighttime commanders. Um, for this month, uh, for the month of February, let me give you guys some statistics first. Uh, for burglaries, we're up a bit with five reported. Motor vehicle thefts, we had eleven reported. Uh, general thefts, we had thirteen reported and thefts from vehicles, uh, we had ten reported. Um, also, I need to click away to another screen for a sec. Can you guys still see me clearly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you guys, uh, in terms of assaults, um, there was an assault on the twenty eight hundred block of Henry Street. I don't know if that's necessarily your guys' side. There was an aggravated assault at the four hundred block of Halapia Place. Uh, aggravated assault at the nine hundred block of Hala Drive. And also another simple assault at the thirteen hundred block of Ahiai Street. Um, no sex assaults to report and no robberies also reported. Let's see, let me get back to you guys. Uh, a tip for the, tip for, tip for the month is, um, again, we want to try and emphasize, um, in terms of theft, to try and be, uh, we want to be more on the preventative side. Um, we've been advising those that own Kias or Hyundai's, um, that you need to know about the vulnerability of your ignition system and that allows your vehicle to be stolen very easily. Um, I believe the manufacturer has already got the pressure from the federal government, um, about improving that. But I have, I'm not sure because I don't own a Kia or Hyundai if they've done any type of recall or anything like that. So you might want to contact your dealers about that, about hardening your, your, uh, your vehicles. Uh, in the absence of that, you want to think about maybe parking it inside of other vehicles that cannot be easily stolen to prevent your vehicle from, you know, to just make it a harder target. That's what you suggest. Um, I'll open it up to any questions or concerns, sir.
Uh, thank you, Lieutenant. I got real quick, you said assault. What kind of assaults are there? Domestic assaults, just guys beating up each other or what is a gang or?
Um, the assaults that, that we record, um, if it was on, uh, uh, like an abuse type case, it would have came in as a family offense. So we didn't have any reported in your guys' area for the month of February. Um, so it's, it's basically like fights or, um, that sort of thing.
But not gang related, I hope.
No, no, it's not, it's not gang related. It's usually, um, I, I'm not able to get the specifics, but the, when, when I say aggravated, it's usually based on what kind of, um, what kind of injuries were incurred by the different parties. Um, up you guys' area, there's not too much of the, you guys don't have any malls or that kind of thing where people necessarily hang out. So my, my suspicion, it's, um, it's kind of like a crime of opportunity, that sort of thing, yeah.
Well, that's good to hear. We have a very peaceful neighborhood, as you can see.
Yeah, for the most part.
Uh, questions? Henry.
You indicated crime of opportunity. So these assaults were possibly more assault and theft or just?
On, on, if, if it's a, if it's a theft that occurs during assault, we would, we classified as robberies. Yeah, and you guys didn't have any robberies. So, I mean, some of these, I, I'm guessing it's like, uh, people who know each other or they, they see each other. You guys do have parks in you guys' area, so it could have occurred because of, you know, people hanging out at the parks, that sort of thing.
Donald?
Um, I requested, um, the police surveillance for Kapalama Avenue from about, maybe about three thirty to seven. Uh, I don't see any, um, police monitoring. And also, um, that's exhibition of speed. Exhibition of speed. The criteria is, uh, you don't need a radar gun. As far as the discretion of the officer, if you, so-called, run your first gear up all the way, it's an exhibition of speed. You burn rubber on the road, that's an exhibition of speed. Because in our area, to me, that should be one of the things that you charge the driver. Because you don't need a radar gun. And as far as I'm concerned, it's the discretion of the officer. If he says that you were speeding, you were speeding. And that's all he has to do. So I request again, I want police surveillance on Kapalama Avenue from three thirty to seven. Because we have a lot of people who think they have a hot rod, which I'm sure they may have, but it's dangerous. And as far as I'm concerned, I would like to see this thing stop. And the only way you can stop it is the officer goes up and cite, give him citation for the exhibition of speed, which is non-contestable.
Donald, where on Kapalama Avenue would you, is it a specific area or just the whole Kapalama Avenue?
Kapalama Avenue is from School Street all the way to the top of the hill.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, because the thing is that, um, why, anyway, I hope this will stop speeding.
Donald, I think he's got it. Why don't you report back to us next, uh, meeting, Lieutenant?
I will, sir. This is, this is the first I've heard of it, but I'll make sure that my, my men are aware of it and also that they watch guys and we'll, we'll take note of it.
Great, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Yeah. Um, just, in fact, yesterday, I guess, there had been a shooting in School Street. Okay, can you brief us a little bit more about that situation and if the firearms or?
Are you talking about the, the game room?
Yes.
Okay, um, the one firearm that they recovered, um, it, it appears to be a ghost gun. So what that means is the, the, the bottom frame of the gun is 3D printed and then they just, um, attach a legitimate slide on top of it. Um, it was, again, it was a game room, so it's not a random act. Um, apparently they were trying to rob the game room and, uh, security for the game room gave resistance and that, that's apparently who was shot. Um, but I, I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about unless you're, uh, someone who frequents the game rooms, which, which I don't recommend. But, um, yeah, it's, it's not, it wasn't a random act, sir.
So that's, that's good to hear. Henry, stay away from there. Any other questions? Lieutenant, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, you have a great evening.
Uh, next, Border Water Supply. And, uh, someone raised the issue about rebate for energy efficient appliance. I think that was Donald, somebody, one of us raised it. Is, I thought, I, oh, you're the one who raised it. Where's Iris? I don't see.
I'm online, yes.
Yeah, I know, but I still.
Oh, I don't have my picture up. I'm, I'm not camera ready. Sorry. So are you ready for my report? Yeah, I, I'm not camera ready, so I'm just having my, my words up. So I'm just here to give, I'll do the first my announcements. The one main break of near seven nineteen, Level Street happened on February thirteenth. The general water announcement for March is the World Water Day. Um, so this Border Water and other city agencies, certain agencies, sorry, are observing World Water Day on March twenty second. And the theme this year is Water for Peace. So it's this internationally recognized event encourages water users across the globe to make a difference by changing how they use, consume and manage water in our lives. So in this observance time, they're going to read inspirational stories and you can watch videos on the global water and sanitation crisis. Find out how climate change impacts our water and get conservation tips. So go to boardofwatersupply.com slash world, World Water Day. And also there's going to be some social media channels. And you mentioned about, um, energy efficient appliances. We don't do energy efficient appliances, we do water efficient appliances. So last month, and I'll mention it again, we had a hundred dollar toilet rebate for a limited time. So it's, um, let's see. It's water sense label toilets, one point two eight gallons or less or less. And it's only available till April eighteenth. It's limited to four per household and ten for commercial customers. So that's my tip. You can go to boardofwatersupply.com rebates. So that's my report and.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions, any questions from the board? From the audience? Not Iris, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, who?
Oh, HFD.
Thank you, Iris. HFD, the fire department, are you here?
Yes, we are. So, I'm, I'm sorry that we are a little, a little late to this meeting. Got a few earlier, so if you ready for me, I can give you my, uh, I guess the stats for, for the month. Um, are you hearing me okay right now?
Yeah, we're fine, go ahead.
Somethin'. All right, for stats for February two thousand twenty-four, fires, we had three structure fires. We had, uh, seven activated alarms that, with no fire. Uh, emergencies, we had one hundred and seven medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with, involving a pedestrian, uh, three motor vehicle crash collisions. And, um, our fire safety tip for the month would be smoke alarm safety tips. So smoke alarms save lives and are an important part of your home fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintained smoke alarms give occupants early warning to get out quickly. Install smoke alarms inside each bedrooms and outside the sleeping areas, hallways and on every level of the home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathroom to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month. Press the test button to ensure the alarm is working. If the smoke alarm requires a nine volt battery, replace the battery every year and replace smoke alarm unit every ten years or sooner if they do not respond properly. Um, that's what we have for you guys. Is there any questions?
Questions, yes, Cora.
I live five, six houses away from Natsonoya.
Yes.
And, uh, um, just curious to see if we found, if investigation has found the cause. You know, was it like short?
Well, at this time, they're still, um, going through it and then they usually email us the report when they come up with a, a finding. So at this point, yeah, we, we don't, uh, I don't want to speculate or anything on it right now.
Right, just curious, people asking me. Um, and the, the other question is, um, when it's like, it was like two, two thirty AM or two AM, um, when the units respond, and I think there were eleven units, um, do they have their sirens on? Or no? Or just someone?
They all have us, um, any kind of emergency response, uh, we're needed, we need to have our lights and sirens, um.
That means, that means I'm a good sleeper because I slept. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's required by our, by law that we do that in order to, I guess, alert the public that we're coming in.
Chair.
Yes. Carol.
Do you want to, um, we have something further on in the agenda. Do you want to address it now? Okay, um, can you tell me anything about the other Makonani Drive fire about a week before the Natsonoya?
Oh, yeah, that fire is also still under investigation and we haven't been given a report yet by our investigation, so.
I'm going to leave it on the agenda. Those are two fires that we've never had, well, we haven't had any for a long time.
Yeah.
I can remember any fires. So why don't you keep us posted?
Yes.
We're very curious, okay?
Well, I'd like to say I'm, I'm a little concerned because I've talked to people who were at both fires and they said that started outside of both houses. Both structures, I should say.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, no, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Moving right along. Uh, let's see, filling vacancies, four and five subdistricts. Um, Subdistrict four and five are actually, uh, along Kuakini Street. Anybody interested? Don't all stand up at once? I guess not, we'll move up, move along. Any resident concerns? Okay, not Oompo. Aaron?
Thank you, uh, I attended the meeting last Wednesday. Since Miss Cora was gone, so they had a very in-depth presentation or overview where Charlie's Taxis is trying to repeal the director's authority to set rates. Apparently Uber and Lyft do not set their own rates, they can do what they want, whereas Charlie's is forced to follow whatever the city posts. So it was about a forty-five minute overview, presentation very in-depth. At the end of the day, they were looking for Oahu's, uh, MPO's feedback. They were given some feedback to go back and make some changes and then present it again. It was a very extensive overview of their, of the reason why they want to have it repealed. Any questions?
No, but thank you very much for, uh, you know, volunteering to be, uh, helping Cora represent us. Thank you. Any questions by the board? Public? Okay, if not, um, let's go back to, um, resident concerns. I think Dylan has something.
Yeah, so I have, there's two bus stops, uh, between Wiley and Judge Street. And they have, uh, signs, it's, it's the mark of bound signs that there is no more bus service there, but people are waiting for buses. I've had a couple people fall in. There's still signs there that say bus service, but there's no service.
Was this, uh, anywhere specific, um, on Wiley and Judd or just the intersection? Which street?
Just the intersection here on New Wano.
Wano?
Yeah.
Chair.
Right, New Wano, Judd and.
Chair, the Department of, uh, uh, must be, must have been from the bus. They sent out a notice saying that in the afternoon, those stops would not be serviced, but in the morning they would. The bus sent out a notice saying that those stops were not going to be serviced in the afternoon, but would be serviced in the morning.
That, that's nice to know, but if I'm in the afternoon, I don't know about the morning. I'll be standing there. Well, anyway, I'm, we'll give that to our city representative. Uh, there'd be some irate people waiting for the bus in the afternoon. But thank you for that. Yeah, um, yeah, put some, I think, put a sign, I think that's a recommendation. Working in the morning, close at the afternoon, something like that. Okay, thanks, thank you. Any other concerns? No, you're moving right along. Uh, reports of members, attendings at any other meeting that make a concern us? No? All right, uh, Mayor's Representative, Ed.
Hello and good evening. Edward Ospina, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. I'm the mayor's rep for this area. Um, I do have some bus service modifications that they did write on my report here, so I don't know if this is what you're talking about. Um, but Route ten, Kalihi, Level Heights, so that one, afternoon school day service discontinued running Maime Maime school, bus stop three thirty-nine fourteen. Um, bus stop thirty-nine fourteen will continue, continue to be serviced, um, by Route four though. Um, sorry, I'm not a whiz at, um, bus routes or where they head. Just got one of my reports, what's on my report here? Um, Route ten bus stops are located on Wiley Street and Delhiha Street. Um, bus stop thirty-nine fifteen, Level Heights and number one, Ten to Kalihi. Um, now the afternoon one, um, afternoon school day service for Wananafo Middle School will be modified to be served out of bus stop forty-six fifty-eight. This is New Wano Ave, running Wananafo School at two thirty-eight on two days only. Um, no changes at this bus stop for morning school day service.
Are, are the signs showing that?
Doesn't sound like it. I'll get word to the bus and, uh, have them update those.
Why don't you give us a report going on? Yes, worth it, yes, Carol.
It might be good to just tell everybody, there is an app that you can pull up called The Bus and it will tell you all of these things, including when the bus is coming and you can track it coming to your stop.
Another bus route in the area that, not sure if anybody uses, because it's only right next door, public, bus route one, two, three servicing Papa Cola at Pacific Heights. Um, the morning school day only trip will be discontinued, um, two trips. Seven forty-nine AM departing bus stop twenty-two eighty-eight, which is Alapai Transit Center to Papa Cola, as well as the eight oh one departing bus stop thirty-eight twenty-six. That's at Poo Waina Drive and Poo Wui Street that heads towards the Alapai Transit Center. So I know it's just one street over, so not sure if anybody takes that one.
Well, but I think the, the solution is put up a sign. So what, someone's not sitting there for two hours, where's the bus?
Yep, yep. Um, other than that, going back to the mayor's report, um, mayor wants to mention that he's starting his town hall meetings again, the first meeting starting next week, Thursday. Uh, the first meeting is at Kapalay High School. Um, and, and those, these meetings will kind of recur every Thursday, um, through June sixth. The closest one for this neighborhood board would be, um, April eighteenth, six thirty PM. This one's going to be at K A Licolani Middle School. Um, K A Licolani Middle School is the one that's, um, between Priory and, um, Palilong, that way. Oh, sorry. Right, Central. Yeah, yeah, correct. Used to be the Central, Central Middle School. So that's going to be the closest one for this one, um, again, April eighteenth, six thirty PM. Um, these town hall meetings, if you haven't been, include an open Q and A session with Mayor Van Gierde and representatives from each of the department agencies. We do, try to do a good job of answering questions then and there, not pretty prompt about follow-up. Um, public is encouraged to attend and give suggestions of how this administration can better serve, serve the people of Oahu. Um, other than that, I did want to share that Alamoana Regional Park is up for best city park in the nation. Um, just like the zoo when I mentioned last month. Uh, you can vote every day until April ninth. I voted this morning and we were in second place. Um, as far as the zoo when I reported on last, last month, um, those results, I understand, come out, mm, uh, March fifteenth. So by the end of this week, we should know the result of how we did on that zoo. But I know every day I voted, we are kind of between three and four, so hopefully we can stick it out and stay in the top five on that one.
Well, before you leave that, why is our zoo so well-recognized? We have more animals or we have strange animals or what?
My understanding is, you know, we made the nomination this year. Um, part of it, most of it had to do with, we just got recently re-accredited. So the zoo had been out without accreditation for several years. Um, so we suspect that it has to do with accreditation, um, gets you eligible to be in the running and.
So it's nothing to do with the animals that are there, like some strange animal who can't find any place in the world?
I like to think it's a civic pride exercise.
Thank you.
But, you know, I am a big fan of Alamoana Regional Park and, you know, it's a well-used park and one that I use often, I still use quite a bit, so. But that one is, um, you can vote every day till April ninth. And that, I think that, that'll be making the park's website shortly. It just got notified this morning, it's at the news release out and, um, it's likely to do, they'll have it on their website. Um, other than that, I do have several updates from you from the prior, uh, meetings. Um, first one I'll talk about is the crosswalk at School Street and Kopea Street. Um, so DFM and DPS were, were able to work together, identify that crosswalk. So the ETS will re-strike that crosswalk as, along with installing new signage. Um, they expect that work should be done before the end of March. So that work should be underway. Um, they're going to call for, uh, to get the area scanned, make sure they don't disrupt any utilities or anything like that. After that, they should be able to re-strike that one and get some signage up on that one. I also have, uh, there were no updates on the monster homes from DPP. Um, kind of sticking to status quo that there's been no movement or change on, give those permits. But I did get a follow-up for you on, relative to you, um, there was a question on it, what happens after following that thirty-six fifteen Sierra Drive decision for monster homes? So with the recent decision by the Building Board of Appeals, the whole department's action to revoke building permits, um, a new notice of violation was issued to the owners of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, instead of the Sierra Drive property, which now requires that building permits be obtained for the detached two dwelling and two single-family dwellings that were constructed on that property. The owners have until March seventeenth, obtain new permits before the violation escalates to civil body, for the violation escalated to civil fines. The department will not tolerate the actions of those to break the law and will make every effort to enforce compliance with the law.
That was my question. Because actually, it would be relative to the three, um, addresses on our agenda that we have monster homes. So they appealed, they lost. Now, are they going to re-appeal that or, I mean, are they going to appeal that decision? It doesn't say that, right?
No, there's been no indication whether or not the party's going to appeal.
So they have to issue, they have to apply for another building permit to correct what they've already done?
I believe it's to bring it, they're going to, they're required to get new building permits for what was done. Um, and then they'll evaluate whether they conform with the building permit.
Can you keep us posted? Because I read that article and it was pretty egregious, you know? I think they called it a wet bar, but it was really a kitchen. Come on, guys. A beer is a beer, but a kitchen is nothing, you know? So, you know, I like, we like to follow that and see what the city's going to do and what they're going to do. Because it's, I know that one of our, one or two of our, um, pet addresses here are, is on appeal. I don't know what's going to happen after, you know, if they do lose appeal. So can you keep us posted? I'm going to put, leave it on the agenda. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Didn't they just pass a, uh, bill that said that they could take a six thousand square foot lot and cut it into three separate buildings now?
Okay. Well, she's going to take care of that, yeah. Go, go ahead, Ed.
Um, I also have updates for you on two stop signs. Uh, one of the sixteen twelve, oh, sorry, this is a no parking sign, sixteen twelve all the way. Oh, I'm sorry, Level Drive. So DFM just saw the replacement no parking sign, um, that one should be done. Uh, missing stop sign at Kula and Olenna Street. This one, they saw the temporary stop sign on February twenty-second and they're targeting completion before mid-March. Haven't been to the areas and not that sign was up yet.
Thank you, it's, it's up, it went up last week.
Terrific.
Yay.
Um, I also had a question to consider, raised crosswalks, um, at Unawa Lane and running Saint Francis Hospital. Um, so DTS responded to that one. They did, um, verify that both those as raised crosswalks, raised median, wait, sorry. The median island and curb extension at the intersections of Delhiha, Unawa, as well as Saint Francis are included in the complete street plan for Delhiha. So they'll be incorporating that one in the next, next specs when the, when that, when that road is repaved on Delhiha Street. So that one's going to be incorporated and move forward, persisting with the complete street plan for the area. Yeah. I know they just recently repaved that one, so. But I mean, they're going to incorporate that into the specs when they bid out the next, uh, repeating project for, uh, Delhiha Street in the, in that area. I don't have an update for you on the former Long's Building on Liliha, Puutini Street. Also don't have an update for you, sorry, on the four way intersection at Kapalama. We'll work on that for next time.
Think that should cover the agenda for you. Questions, Carol?
Not a question, but a comment. Thanks. The crossing symbol signal on King Street and Umi was repaired very quickly.
Hopefully you can do the same with those bus side.
I'm sorry, Carol, who is that?
There was, I, last month I had talked about a crossing signal being not in repair at King Street, North King and Umi Street, and it, within three days it was fixed.
Oh, okay, good. Yes, go ahead.
Not a question, but another comment. I just wanted to thank the city for working to get the School Street and Kokiya, that crosswalk to straight. Thank you, guys.
Good job. Anything else? Thank you very much, Ed. Any questions from the audience or the public? If not, Ed, you put the good word. Thanks a lot. All right, moving right along. Councilmember Tam's office. Anybody?
Hi, Lisa Leonardo from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. Can you hear me?
Yes, and who are you?
Lisa Leonardo.
Okay.
From Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. I just want to direct you to his newsletter, which should have been emailed out, and I know that there are a couple of copies that we sent to you. He does want to thank everybody for this board for supporting the game room bills, especially in the light of the shooting that happened on School Street this this past Sunday. Right now, we are waiting for a hearing in zoning committee, which is Councilmember Say's committee. So he's just asking if you continue to support this bill, any testimony that you can send in is greatly appreciated. And that's all that I actually have to report this time.
Go ahead. Are you finished?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I want to thank Carl for drafting a resolution in regards to the game room bill. That was very well, everything was a lot of support. Hopefully it'll help.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the the board? About the public? Okay, if not, thank Councilmember Tam for us. Next, Senator Rhodes's office.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, Board members and those attending. My name is Paul Mendez. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. I'll be briefing on behalf of Senator Rhodes. I have a very short brief here. Basically, just want to update on the Department of Health reported three hundred ninety-two new COVID cases with a seven day average of fifty-three cases and thirteen deaths for that weekly period. I, the Senator, encourage you to stay up to date on your COVID shots as well as your flu shots. Any questions? That's all I have at this time.
Any questions? Yes, Henry has a question.
Okay.
Last month, you weren't the individual presenting, but I asked them for all sort of comparisons on the flus and the colds. Okay, if you present COVID, present the true facts. How many were cold? How many were flu? And how many were COVID?
Understood. We'll get that resolved.
Next week.
Thank you.
Also, sorry. Can you tell me what bills Carl Rhodes have presented that's supposed to be anti-gun and how they would prevent a seventeen year old from getting one? There's laws already that is in existence that prevents juveniles.
Okay. Okay, so what bills or what bills are anti-gun? Has he introduced or is there any?
Yes. Yes. What he has introduced and has supposedly, I think, might have been going to another meeting tomorrow, if not mistaken, anyway.
Yes, he didn't.
What he's presenting does not stop these things, you know what I mean? Banning law-abiding citizens does not stop all these other things. It can't even stop fireworks. So what, what prevents law-abiding citizens?
Okay. What was your name again, sir?
Henry Pang.
Henry, what's the question for him to do? What do you want him to do?
What laws did Carl Rhodes present that would prevent juveniles from carrying guns?
Juveniles means minors, then, right? Got that?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, Chairman. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? How about the public? Yes, go ahead, Donald.
I'm here to uncover, Senator. What is his position on the legalized marijuana issue?
The question was, what's, what's Senator Rhodes' position on legalizing marijuana? Is that what?
That's the question.
Illegalizing it.
So let's see here. Give me one second, because I think I have some information. So there was a similar question from a separate board and about HB two thousand six hundred, which is personal use of marijuana. And so basically on that, the Senator supports the legalization of of use of those twenty-one years of age or older, considering pakalolo has become universally available. Additionally, Senate Bill two four eight seven, which decriminalizes small amounts of pakalolo passed through the Judiciary Committee, which Senator chairs and passed the full Senate. That specific bill has been transmitted to the House of Representatives as of March fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Does that help or answer, clarify some of your question?
So he's for legalizing marijuana?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
Let me just, let me elaborate on that, too. This issue was brought up for us, too, and so we decided that as an individual rather than as a board, they can go and submit testimony. I submit individual testimony. So unless, well, any board member wants me to put it on the agenda. That's why I did not put it on the agenda, but it was such a divisive, divisive, yeah, divisive issue. I'll leave it to the individual decide, you know, whether or not we should legalize recreational marijuana. So at least we know what Senator, Senator Rhodes' position is, okay? Anybody else have a, any board member have any comments or questions? Okay, if there's no objection, I'm gonna leave it off and you guys can submit your own individual testimony about that. This issue is real. It's a very controversial issue. Many, everybody has a different view on that, but thank you. Any other questions from the board, from the public? Thank you. Thank you. I thank Senator Rhodes for us.
Will do. Thank you.
Moving right along. Senator Kim's office. Senator Kim's office. In video online? Kiola?
Hi, it's Kiola. Sorry.
Go ahead.
We received the community report from Rachel for the March edition, so I'm just gonna cover some of the topics on there. Right now, it's crossed over at the, at the legislature on March fifth. So the Senate voted on two hundred ninety-two bills to move forward. The bills are passed and crossed over to the House, while they'll go through the same process again. And similarly, the House passed over some bills to the Senate this past Friday, and we'll hear those bills as well. If you want to participate in the lawmaking process, so if you want to provide testimony on bills that you want to either support or oppose, you can go to the Senate website and find the bill that you're looking for, for example, SB three zero one one. Then you can go and look it up and you can put your testimony there, either written or you can come and testify in person with the hearing. And then, so for SB two four zero one, the feral chickens. It's being reviewed by the House. It got passed over. That bill appropriates money to each county as a grant in aid for the implementation of feral chicken control programs and appropriates money from the Department of Health for feeding of feral animals education campaign. Also, SB three zero one one, the weed whacker bill, which makes it unlawful for any non-government entities or agents there for upgrade of weed whackers in or within one hundred feet of a residential zone except between eight AM and seven PM on most days. That also crossed over to the House to hear as well. And then for a new one that just got her, SB three two zero two, which provides for residential zone lots within an urban district for each county shall allow for at least two additional dwelling units. This bill will authorize building of two additional units on residential properties. The issue of multi-unit dwellings has frequently been brought up as a concern in our communities. And that if you want to make testimony for this measure, you can go onto the Senate website as well if you want to oppose or support it as it does increase the density of our. And then moving on, so for the Lihub Public Library event, they have an event on March sixteenth from two to three PM. It's called How Do I Use Color Analysis? And in this program, the presenters will discuss hue, value, and chroma. You better understand how these colors, how these color attributes can help us identify colors that most closely align and harmonize with our own coloring to make choices involving color easier. It's like about like, if you want to use certain colors and like decorating and stuff. And they also have children's storytime. And that's starting March twenty seventh, which is, and that's gonna move on to every Wednesday from ten AM to eleven AM. And a storytime for kids. They're gonna do stories, rhymes, songs, and crafts suitable from ages three to five. They must be accompanied by an adult parent or caregiver. And then Farrington High School is having a Boring Green Day, which is e-waste recycling. That's also on March sixteenth, and that's from nine AM to eleven AM, fifteen sixty-four North King Street, Liliha Farrington High School. And you can bring computers, TVs, batteries, which are only auto and lead acid only. Can goods densely used clothing only, use eyeglasses, hearing aids, diapers and wipes for keiki and kapuno. For pets, towels, blankets, and food. And then also, they're offering free towing of unwanted cars, and you can call ahead at eight oh eight two nine one six one five one. A Red Hill update. Our office attended the meeting with the Joint Task Force on February twenty second, and it was reported at that time that only one thousand gallons of residual fuel remained out of the sixty gallons that were to be defilled. On March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four, it will be the final day for the oversight of the JTF RH before the project is handed over to the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. The Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill will be responsible for the removal of twenty-eight thousand gallons of sludge, which is dirt, water, and metal particles mixture, draining and removal of pipelines, and the final official closure of the facility. The first meeting of that will be held in May. And then also that they launched, the Navy launched a drinking water long-term monitoring program. And they're gonna have a public information on Thursday, March fourteenth. And that's gonna be the Ford Island Minimart at the NEX. And that's from ten to eleven, ten AM to one PM. Okay, any questions for Senator Kim's office?
Sure.
Go ahead, Carol.
I just want a clarification. The first bill you said, the GIA for chickens, I didn't get the number.
Oh. That is SB two zero four, two four zero one.
Zero one.
For feral chickens.
Okay.
Two four zero one.
The second one was the Farrington High School e-waste free towing. The number, could you repeat that again?
Yeah. Eight oh eight two nine one six one five one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What time, what time is that event?
That time is nine AM to eleven AM on the sixteenth.
Okay, any other questions? Do you want, you want him to cover the right turn on School Street? Or you want it to cover it, Carol?
I, I don't, I don't know if the Department of Transportation has contacted, has Senators Kim's office heard from Department of Transportation about the no right turn on Leaky Leaky?
We have not, but we can look into that. So it's a no right turn on what part of Leaky Leaky? From which street?
From school.
She knows.
Yeah, she was, she, she came to when we went to the site visit.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it on the agenda. This is just reminder, we'll, we'll wait for Department Transportation's reply. Any other questions?
Okay, I'll, I'll put it down.
Yeah, I got, yes, Donald, go ahead.
On the legalized of marijuana, what is the position of the Senator?
So Senator initially voted for it when it went, when it was heard, but in the House, she voted no. When the point came to the floor.
So what's the position?
She voted because of concern.
Say again?
She voted no on the Senate floor.
So she's against legalizing marijuana, right?
She went with what her constituents were concerned about, so she voted no.
My question is, is she for or against the bill, I mean, marijuana, the legalization of marijuana?
So she voted no on that bill. The answer is she voted no.
Okay, we got that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Okay, if not, thank you very much, and thanks Senator Kim for us. All right, next. Thank you. Next, Representative.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everyone. Couple of things on my list. First, Leo Colani Botanical Garden full listing happenment. I checked in with both Department of Transportation and Department, or so State Department of Transportation, right, and City Department of Facility Maintenance, because there's that weird dual jurisdiction. DOT said that they've been going out to their area and clearing what they could. Most of it is on the city side. They said that, you know, because of all the rain and because their, their park has embankments for the stream, they still haven't been able to schedule something, but they are still trying to find a date, and I let them know that I would continue to follow up every month with them until we can get that done.
I'll leave it down, Jen.
That's fine. Check. Thank you. Couple bill updates first for Rose Ring Parakeets, AKA Green Parrots. We do have a bill in the House that crossed over to the Senate. This is HB two three two nine. It's basically funding for a, to continue research on how to do population control and eradication for them. So that went over to the Senate from the House. Also, I also had a feral chicken management bill. Again, mine was HB two zero four six. Mine's a little different. It creates basically a joint city and state agency group with the Department of Agriculture, Department of Land and Natural Resources, and Department of Customer Services at the city to just work together to do work collecting chickens in our neighborhoods and disposing of them. If you have any questions about these bills or need help tracking, please call my office. My staff's great at kind of connecting people with how to get that done. I also wanted to give an update about the bill that I was asking about, the two bills, actually. So there's two bills that do the exact same thing right now. That's HB one six three. So there's two bills, um, that do the exact same thing right now, that's HB one six three zero, that went over to the Senate, and SB three two zero two that came over to the House. This is the
Could you repeat those bills one more second?
HB one six three zero and SB three two zero two. Both of them are alive. So, yeah, so I'm gonna, so this is the bill I talked about last month that I was kind of concerned about, um, and both of them, you know, crossed and are still moving. Um, this is the one about, um, that might have the potential to really lead to overcrowding, you know, I know we already have the monster home issues, and I'm concerned about this bill because the Senator Kim's, um, staffer kind of mentioned, it allows for, it lowers the subdivision of lot size to two thousand square feet, um, I believe Pudaloo County is currently thirty-five hundred square feet. So it's kind of a significant change to subdivide and build on those two parcels. Also, it would allow up to three, or at least, for those reasons, to allow at least three residential dwelling units. So you would have the primary dwelling unit and potentially, you know, on each of the parcels, plus up to two, um, what's kind of being described as essentially ADUs. Um, so you know, you could act, you could, if the lot was, you know, six thousand, seven thousand square feet, yeah, you, you might be able to build it depending on the size of the, that initial dwelling unit, you could have, you know, two dwelling units and four ADUs on a lot where maybe only one house or maybe this. And I know with monster homes, right, the only thing we are kind of doing to monitor them right now are looking at how many people are living there, you know, that whole rule about one family or five unrelated individuals, this would create dwelling units where, you know, that would apply to each of the dwellings. Um, which kind of concerns me without.
Representative, can you explain to us again what these bills would do? Let me see what I can understand, and that way maybe we can, because I read it, I thought, oh, well, it's going to be a, uh, you know, remedy to monster homes. But then reading more carefully, let's think about it.
It's kind of the opposite, I wouldn't say the opposite necessarily, but you know, it, it's, it's a similar issue about building density. Um, and I, I know we really do need, you know, housing, especially, um, for our families, local families who might be trying to move relatives in, which I think that was the intent of ADUs. But I think this bill goes a little too far without writing in more requirements, so you know, if you had, so, say you have a, uh, let's take a map, you have a seven thousand square foot lot. If you have a
Let me give you the example, then maybe you can answer the question. Generally, your, your square footage of a lot is is five thousand square feet if it's zoned R five.
Sure.
Now, if it's zoned R seven, it's seven thousand five hundred feet, so you're telling me that on my five thousand square foot lot, which there are quite a few, I could drink, put two dwellings at two thousand square feet apiece?
You could definitely subdivide and do two dwellings, and then on that bigger lot, you might be able to do at least one ADU.
And if I had a seven
For ADUs and, you know, building would still apply, but it starts opening it up like
Okay, and if you have a seven thousand five hundred square foot, uh, R seven,
Yeah.
If I divide it two thousand into seven thousand, that's three homes there.
It's, yeah, that's why I'm a little concerned, um, and also
I was kind of concerned.
It also bans the owner occupancy requirements for ADUs.
Yeah.
Um, so you know, currently, you know, we're usually, we're trying to build for maybe family or one renter, but you're on the property monitoring them. This would say you can buy a property built like this and write out to
So let me, let me, let me go one more step. I have a five thousand square foot lot on an R five zone, okay? And I put two two thousand square foot homes there, that's permitted under there. Now, each home has no requirement as to the number of occupants, right, I could have
If they're families, there's no, as many family members who are
And then my family.
Yeah, if they're all related.
They're all related. Everybody's related.
The, the one thing I noticed on this bill was there's no restrictions for parking.
Yes, um, so the current, so the current rules for parking that the city already has, which I think, you know, we've all seen kind of work and don't work, especially what we're building now, would, they would still apply, but I, I, I mean, I, I've thrown out there that maybe we could put, you know, a floor for parking if we're going to do this in, you know, like, in, like, urban Milwaukee essentially, but I haven't been able to make
Let's, let's, let's ask questions, okay, then you can put your position, I think Henry's dying to see something.
So, my understanding is that presently, the way the current laws is written, we can have a maximum of two units, one main house and a, either ADU or a ohana. Okay? Now, with this new bill, we can put three units on there, one main house, one ADU, and a ohana, or two ADUs.
Right, it, it was, has the family restriction, but, so essentially, yes, one dwelling unit and up, and at least two ADUs is how the bill is written, actually. If you have a bigger lot, you could do more ADUs. If, 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 for some reason, you know, they could work within the current requirement, I think for our purposes, I don't think we would see, you know, six or seven ADUs, this is probably, you know, like, neighbor island. Or their
I'm going to move this, 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 uh, discussion along, if you have any questions, ask the questions now. Because, uh, I was asked to put this on the agenda, and I said no, because we already had our, um, I think you already read, right, I said that, uh, uh, we already had our agenda out, plus the fact that I didn't want to take a vote on this because it's so controversial that I think we should have input by the public, if they want to have input. And so I was going to reserve it till the next, uh, meeting, but is that too late, when are they having a hearing?
Um, the bills are moving fairly quickly, the, on the Senate side, it's only getting two hearings, um, first in the Housing Committee, then in the Ways and Means. Um, on the House side, it's gonna, like, uh, when I emailed everybody about it, it still has the same single referral. Uh, it hasn't been scheduled yet, but in the House, it's only going to get one hearing, um, I think everybody's on my email list, I do plan on emailing everybody when that happens. I, I'm really hoping people will, you know, share their concerns about overcrowding that we've seen, to kind of let the committees know that there, there, there is real concern.
So Representative, actually, we don't have enough time for the next meeting. Because hearing be before the, our next meeting, is that what I'm saying?
If it happened, depends when the committee
Why don't we do this, if you don't mind, it's okay with the board here, let us know when there is the hearing, and if it's before the next meeting that we have, even though I may put it on anyway, then at least we can submit individual testimony, is that, is that okay with everybody?
That would be great.
Objection?
And if anyone is interested, um, I don't know if you remember the group High Good Neighbor, they were kind of that community group that was talking about monster homes when it, when it was in the media. So they actually reached out to me because they saw I had go hit no on the bill, and I had a good discussion with them, they're, they're also concerned. If you need some more resources or, um, talking points, um, they said I could give out their email to the board if there's any questions that, I, I'm happy to answer if you also want to reach out to them, um, I can give you
I, I forwarded her, uh, yeah, to, uh, the board, so they can individually contact her.
For the public, is that, can I just say it?
Um, I don't have it for the public.
I, I have the email.
Uh, Bill, why don't you go ahead?
So if anyone is interested in connecting with High Good Neighbor, their contact is an email, it's hi good neighbor, H I G O O D N E I G H B O R at gmail dot. And, yeah, they're, they're also watching this bill, so, um, as am I. Thank you for any support the board can give, um, and then, sorry, one, just quick update, um, the Department of Consumer Protection and Commerce, um, let us know that, um, you know, after Outback Steakhouse closed, um, if anybody has gift cards that they're no longer able to use because there's no Outback Steakhouse, uh, here, um, they are trying to get people, um, refunds for the gift cards, you can contact, um, their parent company, Lumen Brand, at this email, uh, gift card team at Lumen Brand, P L O O M I N E R A N D S dot com. And with your email, just, um, provide a picture of the front and back of your gift card so that they can check the amount for you. Then in the email, also include your full name and your mailing address so that they can get you the refund check. And happy to answer any other questions.
Any question, yeah, go ahead, Donald.
The marijuana issue, are you for or against?
Um, the bill that's currently being circulated that came over from the Senate to the House, um, I've been watching the progression of that. I've told House leadership, as written, um, because of the feedback from the community, I'm not going to be able to vote for it unless additional, um, you know, health and safety precautions are somehow built into the bill. So as currently written, unless they make major changes to the bill, I'll be voting no.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, go ahead, Darren.
I have one, and apologies for putting you on the spot for this question, and it's not meant to be a gotcha question, but I'm just curious what the allocation was for funds, or what, what I was trying to do for the parakeets?
Oh, the dollar amount?
You know?
Um, we're kind of at the point where we, like, blanked out the amount, um. I can get you the amount that was written into the bill that was suggested by Invasive Species Council to kind of start the research up again, but I know when it got to finance, as we typically do, we just blanked out the dollar amount, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Okay, and the other question I had was, I had to that, Kauai also passed a bill where they had allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do the same thing. Do you know if there's any type of coordination going on between them, lessons learned? Maybe, you know, get more bang for the buck for the amount of dollars that we're going to spend for getting our hands on these birds?
Kauai County? You know, it might be the same program, because actually, so this bill would, because, you know, Kauai is a little smaller, and they have a kind of more controlled population where it's really big, so even the bill that the House passed out was money to pilot solutions on Kauai to then be implemented, um, statewide. So it might be the same thing, or, or similar to Invasive Species Council, who's, um, doing the real work on this, um, I think they might, they're, they're, the, the main group as far as I know, Invasive Species Council, doing this eradication work for
Sure.
Go ahead, Carol.
The original bill has a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, maybe similar efforts, that's the number that came up.
Thanks, Karen.
Go ahead, Henry.
So is actually the parakeets are a, an invasive species?
Yes, but they kind of, uh, last time I talked to them, you know, a number of years ago, when I first started prevent, presenting on behalf of Rep. Ohno even, um, Invasive Species Council also kind of considers them, um, like, that they're here, like, they're not trying to prevent them, like, you know how we're trying to prevent the spread of ho- ho- coconut raymonosaurus feet or some of these other invasive species? They kind of, oh, established, they consider them established on basically all the islands already. Um, that's why there's not this, like, huge rush, and we're kind of just trying to work on ways to work on population control, work on the eradication, since they're, they consider them at this point established on all the islands.
So it's not a higher, higher priority of the
Unfortunately, yeah, I, I don't think it's as, as urgent as some of these other things, uh, of these other species, like, you know, like destroying crops, or, you know, like, that they're still trying to keep under control where they
So Representative, I have under unfinished business, eradication of parrots and feral chickens, parrots, you're not, we're not talking about parrot, we're talking about
Rose ring parakeets? Yeah, I, I know, they, they, they're probably what you're thinking of, those greens, those big green birds.
Yeah, those, I, those are parrots, aren't they?
They're, they're rose ring parrots. Yeah.
So we're talking about the same, same animal, I mean, bird?
Yes, the, the green parrots that you guys see, those are rose ring parakeets.
Got it?
Yeah.
So, all right, so that's covered under eradication of parrots and, and feral chickens together?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All the same, all the birds.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, or a dying dude?
Oh, no, just a, just a comment, uh, I, I happened to watch, um, this program, Insight, Insights on PBS Hawaii last week, the seventh. They were talking about feral chickens, and basically, they, they were saying, you have to stop the feeding because that's what attracts them, and again, they're, you can't really eradicate them, they're here. You have, you can only control them, but you can control them. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's a question of feeding, if people keep feeding, then they're going to go keep multiplying and go wherever people are feeding, so you, you control on your property, whatever, um, but, you know, they have wings, so they can come. And if somebody's feeding near you, they come, so, um, but also interesting, the city, apparently, um, there was a woman, Kim, Oshiro, I think, Department of Community Services, said there's a program, if you catch a feral chicken on your property and you don't want to kill it, you want to get rid of it, you can take it, or you find out where to take it, the vendor, there's a vendor for the city. I think you pay ten or fifty, twenty-five dollars, and they can, um, humanely get rid of the chicken by carbon monoxide. They have, um, some device.
Wait, wait, uh, maybe
Goes to sleep.
I'm not trying to be facetious, you're going to be twenty-five bucks for somebody to
Or ten, I don't know, ten
Ten dollars to go and humanely kill that chicken?
Because people are, you know, some people are
For five bucks, bring it over to my house?
Okay. Yeah, and I believe that's the money that Senator Kim is trying to, um, send to subsidize that program, to keep those, uh, costs low as possible.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Ron.
I used to, uh, dead chicken killer, and, uh, at the cap shop at center, what's he say, look, uh, feed the chicken, more chicken going to die on the road. Yeah. And not going to eat that. By area, I see that. And that is more dangerous, because they can fly in it, any kind place.
Thank you very much. All right, I just hope nobody in this, uh, board is feeding chickens, okay? All right.
Also, uh, don't eat them, because, or you rather
Oh, yeah, don't eat them.
You don't know what they've been eating.
Oh, yeah, no, don't, don't eat them, definitely don't eat them, I, I was told, no, no chicken adobo. All right, moving right along, any other questions for Jen, how do we get to chickens? I'm sorry, Representative, any questions? Questions from the public? All right, thank you very much, Representative.
What about the legal, um, gardens? And their unfinished business?
Yeah, so, um, we're still waiting for the date, uh, DOT has been going to, um, clear the state portion. Um, because EFM, the city portion, has, you know, a lot of the stream banks and everything that they need the specialized equipment to come in. The, uh, recent weather, um, has been kind of keeping them from being able to schedule, but they're both aware that, um, I'm going to continue to follow up with them until we can get the full coordinated sweep done.
You know, actually, I, I think last meeting, I did mention the fact, I did go down, and I took a picture, as a matter of fact, everybody saw a, a very nice, uh, waterfall. It's not being used, and of course, there's no parking there, but, I mean, I don't know, maybe, is that a city thing, I mean, no one's using it. No one's there, not even the homeless.
Yeah.
They're down on the bridge, but not in the park.
Yeah, there's no space to make a, or, I mean, there's a parking lot on that side.
It was a rhetorical question, it's a beautiful park, it's very well groomed, it's, uh, you know, you could have a terrific picnic there. You can park up in Coolakin and walk down, it's very nice, but no one's using it, so I don't know, I mean, I just throw that out, that's a rhetorical question. Anything else?
My question is, when are we going to resolve this? This has been going almost a year already. You know, it's time, it's time for, for you folks
Two, two years.
To get this thing done, and to get it removed, I mean, you always talk about, you know, well, you know, we want to know exactly what your intentions are to get those people out of the, underneath the bridge.
So I know, um, the service providers, though regularly, they know it's an ongoing encampment, they try to, but we just can't force people to go. Um, so they just go, um, my understanding is a process, they try to, you know, build, um, you know, build trust and relations with people to convince these people to move on, go to the shelter, accept services, because a lot of these people, right, are might have mental illness, are on drugs, so, just, and at the same time, we can't force them to accept services, so that's what the long-term steps have been to kind of move encampments along, but, um, I know, as soon as, you know, we do the sweep, one or two months later, someone at the board tells me they're back again, and we put it back on the agenda, it's just, nature, it's a, it's a big space that's covered, so it's very attractive to
To answer Donald's question, it's been, I mean, five years, not just two years.
Okay, I mean, the thing is that you can have the sheriff's department, because now, you, you know, the so-called who owns what, right? If that is the state, why not the sheriff's department go and make a sweep and get rid of them? I mean, you always, always talk about the police department.
We've called the sheriffs in the past, they've said that their only jurisdiction is the Capitol District currently, um, there are talks to, now that it's the new Department of Law Enforcement, who's kind of split off from public safety, who does prisons now, that there is hope that they're going to be able to do more enforcement as they kind of train up their officers to cover other state properties.
I mean, the way you, the way you talk, I don't understand, my understanding is, any state property, the sheriff's department has cognizance, not the Hoonah Beach Department, and, and this is a conversation always Not the whole police department, and this is a conversation, always there's a rebuttal. One says, no, that's not our district, oh, cognizance, and the other says, no, that's not. I mean, if nobody owns that, I mean, I mean, something's wrong here, you know? If that's the sheriff department, they're supposed to be able to go in and make a sweep. I mean, don't give me this thing about, oh, they don't have a cognizance. If that's the case, why do we have a sheriff department?
I can follow up with them about where they are and expanding services to other state properties.
Anyway, you see our frustration, five years if nothing else. Maybe the good thing about it, let me ask this question from the city and also state, are you getting any feedback or complaints by the neighbors? When I drove over there, I saw some neighbors, they didn't seem concerned because no homeless were in the park. They're as relevant, the neighbors don't even use the park, because there's no parking. But it's still a nice park and all the homeless, quote unquote, or they were hanging their laundry on the railing that's beyond the fence, fence there, it says no trespassing. So that's state property, I know that. So I don't know, I, I haven't heard, it's been on the agenda for a long time, but I haven't heard any complaints.
To be honest, I think the immediate neighbors, you know, everyone who lives in Honolulu, Honolulu, are very concerned. I do feel like they've gotten just a little tired as well about people just continuing to return. I think the situation at night, I've heard.
Oh, it's nighttime?
A lot of, you know, I think it's for doing drug activity there and other illegal kind of activity.
Yeah, we'll put it this way, it's still going to be on the agenda until it's resolved. It's been five years now, yeah, so anyway, city and state, it's an ongoing problem, we'll leave it up to you, it's a very beautiful park. Any questions anymore? Yes, Chance.
Is, would that area be considered a kind of a sit and lie spot where they, they're unable to set up shop over there? No?
Um, I think that why things might apply specifically to like sidewalks in the public right away. I don't think anyone, I, I, I mean, I don't think any of the agencies intend for people to be in there, like for the spot, they shouldn't be there at all. So I, I'm not sure what might apply for that.
If not legislatively, would it be something that could be done in the legislature where a bill could be proposed to, I guess you can say, make areas especially in terms of safety? Make it where people cannot sit and lie or hang out alone?
I think we'll look into that for next year since we're past bill introduction, but yeah, maybe because it's, you know, the proximity to the stream, you know, the water coming through. I, that could definitely, I see as like a health and safety issue that maybe we might be able to write something about, yeah. I think that adds up to my list for.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from board, public, not representative, thank you very much.
Everybody.
You did a good work, next, Representative May Mizuno. No, moving right along, I have a Representative Daniel Hall's office, Holt's office. Oh, no, that's not. Is that Representative Don? Oh, Governor's rep, no, no, I didn't think, all right, Governor's rep, I was going to get to you. Yes.
Good evening, Chair and Neighborhood Board, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I want to start off by Governor Josh Green's visit to Maui recently. It was to witness the progress being made towards recovery after the wildfires. And a huge focus right now are the new housing options that are being created for Maui survivors. And this does include a temporary replacement for school. If you guys remember, the King Comahoe Third Elementary School was destroyed in that fire. So this new school is expected to provide classes for 600 students with a plan to open next month. So I hope, I look forward to providing an update in either next month's meeting or in May. Gov is also focused on funding from organizations like FEMA and the Department of Housing and Urban Development that will help provide housing for the homelessness on Maui. We had two public housing properties that burned down, P. Elani Homes and David Malo. So that's in the process right now, and two residents did pass from two of our properties. So that's a really big focus and effort right now. But I want to switch over to homelessness now on Anahu. Two new Kahalas have opened up. It's Kamalu Koala and Ho'ohkahi Leo that are open in Kameohe and Honolulu. And it's to provide housing for the houseless community. And this, this is just a piece of Governor Green's goal to decrease statewide homelessness by 50% in his first term, so that's 2026. And I hear the frustration, I'm with you. But we're going to move on to help with so much hardships post-COVID era and the day-to-day tragedies. Like what happened over the weekend on February 20th, Gov Green declared Hawaii as a trauma-informed state to address the impacts of trauma. And ultimately just build resilience and strength and how we can handle it. And this is being done with the Office of Wellness and Resilience. And personally, I'm feeling it's going to be a great insight as to what is going on, what the state can maybe do differently or perhaps more of. And I'm hoping to have an update on that in the next few months. And if you all have any knowledge of mental health pop-ups or community events that have any sort of relation to that topic, please make contact with me and I'll send it over with Gov's comm team. I want to move over to housing now, this has to do with the redevelopment plan for Maerite Homes. It has received approval from the City and County of Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting to move forward with the redevelopment plan for Maerite Homes. So this is great news because this redevelopment project is going to transform this existing 70-year-old committee, community, 70 years old. That has 364 public housing residences. And it's going to turn into a very vibrant, mixed-income, mixed-use, transit-oriented community, affordable housing units in the Kaliki Palama neighborhood. With 2,448 new homes for local residents and families. And this is the span of 15 years. So I'm really looking forward to providing updates, we have more at hpha.hawaii.gov. We've got a new website, so definitely check out more details on there. And I want to end things on, on more light news with education, entertainment. UH West Oahu is moving forward with a new state-of-the-art film studio to impact the overall film and television industry in the state. But this is also great because we know there's a lot of talent and creative people here in Hawaii. So this is going to create educational experiences with our students, it's going to bring networking, it's going to bring marketing. And from my creative point of view, I just think it's going to bring more stories by native storytellers. And an outlet like this, I have a lot of hope for that community. And just overall, a gentle push, Gov is just reminding the public that the public libraries, they offer free entertainment. There's learning opportunities, so much on the web, there are services for the community to explore and connect. Wifi services to apply for state jobs or city jobs to get involved. And if there's anything that you would like to bring up with our state life, with our public libraries, feel free to let me know by contacting my email, which I'll leave in the chat. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much, and also thank Governor for his initiatives in regards to getting more affordable senior housing, along with the mayor too. I mean, that's really a must. I have a question, I don't know if you can answer this, what's the Governor's position on where the stadium should be?
I don't have that answer, but I could definitely follow up and email you.
Yeah. You can report back. Yeah, go ahead.
Definitely. Um, school street is exciting as well, and we have a full article at hpha.hawaii.gov. It's happening on our campus, so just seeing a couple buildings move already, it's, it's impressive. It's, it's really, it's amazing just to see a team work so fast. And, you know, it's, it's in dire need, we're truly in a crisis, a housing crisis.
Yeah. I think it's great that the mayor and the governor are getting together to do that, but again, my question again, you can get back to us or give back to me. And what is the Governor's position on the stadium? I work, I work at the university, I teach at the university. And a 15,000 stadium versus a 30,000 stadium makes a big difference. And I'm just curious what the, what's the Governor's, since I think, was it the House that voted to have it on the campus or something like that? Yeah, but if you don't mind asking him, since it can be a driving force one way or the other. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, Carol.
Um, can you tell me where the Honolulu Kahala is? I know it's somewhere near Middle Street, but I haven't seen it, so if it's open, that'd be interesting to know where it is.
Yes, we have two in Kameohe and Honolulu. I could provide you the proper addresses.
Okay.
Follow up with.
I heard it before they named it, referred to as Middle Street. I'm there every day, I haven't seen it, I'm wondering where they tucked it.
I will get back to you on the address.
You don't?
No, no, just a question and.
Okay, good.
Edward.
He'll get back to you.
He just answered.
He just answered. Thank you, Ed.
Yeah.
We, we, we got the answer, thank you, you don't have to go back to us and that. Any other questions?
Okay.
Donald?
You know, the Governor's report, I guess for this month, there is a picture of Maerite Housing redevelopment approval. I mean, don't the state have, you know, don't learn from lessons learned and like Kohio Park Terrace? I mean, you folks want to build something, what I look at right now on this flyer? I mean, Kohio Park Terrace, you folks couldn't even fix the elevator. I've been to other neighborhood board, 16, and the representatives came in and they're saying for months that elevator didn't work. Now we're giving it to Michael's Corporation. What a wonderful thing, after 99 years, they're going to have all that building and property. I mean, what's going on with our government? I mean, you know, Kohio Park Terrace was a thong, now you're going to do another one? I mean, I don't really understand this. Don't we know lessons learned that government, state government is not in a housing business because you cannot even take care of your buildings? I mean, what's going on with the Governor right now?
Okay.
Yeah, so what's your answer?
Actually, the question, yeah, the question.
I didn't hear that, what's going on with the Governor right now?
No, no, the question I think that Donald's asking is, I'm going to add on to that. You know, Michael's now has the bid in RFP in regards of building Maerite Housing. That, that's a sane outfit that built Alawayalo at the end of River Street, I know that.
It's high ridge Costa development, it's not Michael's.
It's not Michael's, that's what I thought, Michael's didn't get the bid, I remember that. So Michael's did not get the bid, maybe you could find out who got the bid and answer Donald's question, but I thought, I was surprised when Don said Michael's got it, I think Michael's was rejected.
I, I, I thought Michael's got.
It's High Ridge Costa.
What's that?
It's High Ridge Costa.
Oh, it's not Michael's, that's what I thought.
No.
Anyway, the question, Donald, would you give it to him again?
No, because you're saying it's not Michael's for Kohio Park Terrace? Because I've been going to a couple meetings that Michael brought up about revamping the community, making nice walkways, whatever. And there was Michael's representative, so you're telling me that that's not true?
No, I'm not telling you that's not true. I'm, I'm confused at what we're talking about, Maerite Homes or what you just mentioned, the rendering that you saw, then you brought up KPT? So the question is, what can Gov do differently, is that what you're asking me?
No, okay, let, let me rephrase it.
Okay, go.
I've seen this Maerite Housing development, and my, my question is, you know, the state does not have a good record of housing. Yeah, and I showed, and I gave the example that Kohio Park Terrace.
Okay.
Okay, and the Kohio Park Terrace, well, as far as I'm concerned, was a flop. Because the state couldn't even provide running elevators. The question I have is that why are we looking at Maerite Housing? And then I see three buildings, skyscrapers, that, um, can you, can you tell me that you guys can support these buildings? Or are you guys going to so-called give it to someone else that to run, to run the facility?
Okay. So why are we looking at Maerite Housing?
It's, it's in your flyer.
No, I'm, I'm following your question, I really want to get this answered for you.
Okay. The question is.
Okay.
Why are we building this redevelopment of Maerite Housing, which I see there is three high rises?
Okay.
The state has a bad, bad reputation about they cannot even support these so-called buildings. So why are we looking at redevelopment, this type of project? When we know that the state will be unable to support the buildings? And the example, and the example I brought up, which was the failure of the state, was Kohio Park Terrace. Because can you tell me that Kohio Park Terrace is not a failure by the state? Or if everything was good, that the state provided all the services for those low-income people?
I personally am not focused on the failures, I'm really focused on the progress that needs to be done in this housing crisis and the future to keep our residents here. Because in the past, emergency proclamations on housing or anytime Governor Green talks about housing, he talks about the day-by-day basis of how many local peoples leave the state of Hawaii and possibly never come back. There's families that are torn apart, there's friends who don't see each other for decades. So he's trying to fix all of this, and yes, there has been mess-ups in the past, and we, we see them, we reflect on them, we want to do things differently. But these are all great valid points because housing is top priority for Gov Green, for sure. So I want to get back to you with these questions and these comments and these feedback. And HPHA is going to be here for you guys to get those answers for you while, this is all part of the Kali Momi Redevelopment Project, not KPT. We're going to have updates on that hopefully later this year. I know what you're talking about, that recent in-community engagement meeting that happened toward, towards like the end of last year. So I will get back to you on.
So.
How this really reassures the people that this is going to happen.
You have Mr. Nita's question, right? You understand Mr. Nita's question?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay, and are you going to get back to us? All right, that's funny.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, any other questions? Yes, Darren.
Hey Dallas, I'm looking at the Hawaii Public Housing Authority website, and it shows that there's 364 public housing units on, on the property right now with 1,500 residents. So a little bit of the, you know, back of the napkin math, it shows us that there's about 4.12 people in each housing unit. If I take that and look at what's proposed, with 2,448 new housing units at 4.12, it comes out to roughly 10,085 people. And I think we can agree that that area is crowded as it is. And now you've just increased it up to 10,000, what's the plan going to be to redevelop that whole area to be able to handle all of these people and traffic?
Did you get that question?
Yes, just to follow up, you said we're increasing it to 10,000, it's over 10,000 statewide. Just Maerite Homes is going from 364 public housing units to 2,448 new homes.
Yeah, if, just at Maerite, if you take the 2448, let me, let me back up, so if you take 364 public housing units, which is on the website, and it says that they house 1,500 residents. You do the math, it's roughly 4.12 people per housing unit. Okay? Now, if you take the proposed new housing units of 2448 and multiply that by 4.12, it comes out to roughly 10,085 people. Makes sense? So how are we going to develop that? So how are we gonna develop that whole area to handle the traffic and the people in that same area?
Did you get the question?
Yes, I did, I'm writing it down just.
Yeah, okay, you got two questions. And if you can come back, come back to us with the answers, we appreciate that for next meeting.
Got it.
Thank you very much. Any, any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Okay, if not, thank you very much. This is a tough board, isn't it?
Thank you guys so much.
Thank the, thank the, thank the Governor for us. All right, um, next, uh, any representative from the Gresional District One at Ace's office? Okay, moving along. Uh, I need, um, any corrections on regards to the minutes for November 13th?
Exactly.
Oh, oh, November 13th and, I'm sorry, and November and February 12th. Okay, I'll do one at a time. Uh, we didn't get a, I don't, I think we didn't have a quorum, is that correct? Or no? So we skipped it in, uh, January because of the rolling blackouts, and then we forgot in February. Oh, was that the one-hour meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I beg your pardon. By the way, we thought we had the record, but no, somebody beat us by five minutes. Anyway, let's do one at a time. In regards to the minutes for November 13th, uh, any corrections on that? Now, those minutes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 13th. Uh, moved by Darren, seconded by Dale. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. No objections, motion carried. Now in regards to the minutes of February 12th, 2024, any corrections? I'll entertain a motion to approve? And move, move by Darren and seconded by Dale. Okay, we'll change the second, we have Don seconding. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? Any polls? None? Motion's carried, thank you. All right, moving right along, let's see, wow. I think we've pretty much covered all the agenda. We went through all the unfinished business, yes, didn't miss anything? Okay, and under new business, we pretty much took care of everything, wow. All right. Malahia, are you here? Saint Francis, are you here? Uh, Lanaquila?
Uh, I handed out the newsletter. And Lanaquila, multiple purpose senior center is, um, has the GIA at a grant aid with the state, asking for 175,000 to keep going for this next couple of years. Uh, the, we just heard about the groundbreaking of the school street redevelopment next door to them, which is the senior apartment, and that started. They're having a volunteer appreciation on, uh, April 17th. And anybody's interested in going or knows somebody who's interested in going but is having problems getting transportation to go, they have more transportation available. You can either call, um, the center, 808-847-1322, 808-847-1322. Because you need to go through the department, the city elderly affairs division and senior hotline to get approval before you can get the Catholic charities um, to give you, sign you up for rides. And so the number for the city elderly affairs division is 808-768-7700, 808-768-7700. And the next show and sell, put it on your calendar, will be May 7.
Carol, actually, I wanted to, uh, thank Donald, Donald, and I don't, I guess it's only Donald, did somebody help you? Um, actually got our ne, our, our neighborhood board out there. And Donald, you want to talk a little something about that?
Yeah, yeah, the thing was, it was a very successful event for Lanaquila. There was a lot of sales of food and treats. Um, the only thing, for me anyway, it was a little disappointing is that the area they gave us. Um, it was on the side. Our banners, I put up the banner, so everybody knew that, uh, Neighborhood Board 14 was in attendance. I had about three people that, uh, I discussed problems with. And I told them that the Neighborhood Board is one of the best so-called instrument. If you have a problem with the government, which is either state or city and county, is that our representative that attends our meetings are not so-called clerks. We have people of, um, high statures in, in government that they are tasked to provide the answer. And every month, we have them so-called focus on the question that we asked the previous month. And, and what is the results? And as far as I'm concerned, it's very, very effective. Rather than so-called your, our neighbors to call the so-called complaint department, talk to a clerk, give them all the information. And about, maybe about a week or two, you might get the answer. Because I did it, and I found out what I'm saying is the truth. I posed the question about above my house, we had a so-called dumpster over there. And for two weeks, you know, there was no reply, no coming back. But when I brought it to the board and to the representative of the city and county, two days later, they got a citation for illegal dumping site. So I explained to them that, you know, um, the board is very effective. If you have a problem, bring it to the board, and we will bring it up to the government, which is state or city and county, to have a resolution. And, uh, to me, it's very, very simple. The only thing I told them was, because of the time that the board meets, uh, you know, I know you have a problem for transportation and all that, but if you can, and I told them, and I wanted to talk to Lanaquila. And we have a process that we can give them our complaint format, and they can give it to Lanaquila. And can, Carol, can you pick it up and bring it to the board's attention on the new business? So we can go and help them process it? And they don't have to so-called come at this time, you know? Can, can we, can we look at that as a vehicle to support our seniors?
I think, I think you could go and pick it up. They're not open when I'm not at work.
Okay, I'll pick it up, I have no problem. But will Lanaquila do the process? That's all I want to ask, because the thing is that, you know, I, I, I don't really know. Well, it's my opinion. If they're really, you know, concerned about the city, senior citizens' problems. Because the thing is that, you know, the senior citizens have problems. And to me, the only vehicle we supposed to be supporting our so-called neighbors is to get this process completed. So yes, I will pick it up, I have no problem with that. But my question is, will she accept what I'm asking for? A vehicle that they can submit, we will give them the form, and they fill it up. And then we can so-called try to process it for them.
Thank you, Donald. And actually, again, Donald, I want to thank you for being there, and you know, and with our banner, which, you know, is displayed very prominently, and talking to the seniors, I agree, that's a great idea. And just to go one step further, I do have the complaint form right here. So, um, I'm gonna give this to Carol, and if maybe you can ask Suzie just.
I, I am virtual, I'm at work whenever they're open.
Yeah, whenever you get a chance.
I don't see them in person, I'm at work whenever they're open.
I will give it, I'll give it to Donald. I, I just changed the name of the mayor, by the way. That was an old form.
I go to meetings virtually because I cannot be there.
Got it, no problem, thank you very much. Oh, good, very good, thank you. Again, again, Donald, thank you very much. Yeah, good idea, good idea. And I did, and Lanaquila does a lot, they're about, I must take it to about 2,000, they serve a lot of the seniors. Still 80 years old, right? The average age. Okay, thanks a lot again.
Wait, 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 so Carol, will you talk to Susan?
I will bring it up at the next PAB meeting, yes.
Uh, next board meeting?
Yes.
And then you'll get back to us?
Yes.
So I don't have to go tomorrow, right? I have to wait?
If you want to go tomorrow, you can go tomorrow, Donald.
I want to make sure that I am welcome.
You're welcome.
With my process, you know, come on, I mean.
And you, Donald, you could tell Suzie that, you know, you have the backing of our board, okay? Suzie, we know Suzie.
We meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month.
So, so I'll wait. I would like you to follow your so-called process, yeah.
It's a PAB, it's the Participant Advisory Board Meeting, it's the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
At noon.
Okay, you two can get together, thank you very much, appreciate it. Good job, and good, good initiative.
It, just, just so you know, it is not a open forum. Everyone gives reports that is there, so it's not like this where people come and, and ask questions and things like that, so.
All right, moving right along, Friends of Leviha Library, friend is not here, we'll put that off. Any other nonprofit organization? Yes, go ahead.
The Hawaii International Film Festival is having their spring showcase, March 21st to March 28th. You go and find, see what movies they got.
I'm gonna tell them how we can find out what, what some of the movies are, where, where we go. Doesn't have, oh, you, you have to, what? The QR code? Use a QR code, you know what movies are coming out. Do you know what, what the, how much it costs, out of curiosity? You don't know, it's, you have to go online. Okay, very good. All right, uh, any other business announcements? Next meeting, Monday, April 8th, 2024, same place, same time? Anybody have anything else they want to bring up? If not, it's 8:15, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I got the sticker on. Which one? All right, Donald, Donald moves, and who seconded? Darren seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand? Polls? Motion's carried, thank everybody, the meeting is adjourned, and thanks for all of you for coming.